In the boardroom.
JR, second.
Hill?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Cadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Zero.
I am pleased to introduce the College Board National Hispanic Recognition Program Scholar, Lawrence High School's own, Diego Klisch. He has received this honor. I'm gonna have him come up. Come on up. Which way?
That's fine, right there.
Fine. Okay.
Just hang out right there.
He has received this honor based on his remarkable academic achievements and outstanding performance on the PSAT and AP courses. Diego is a well-rounded student with success in multiple areas. He holds a 3.9 weighted GPA and ranks number 37 in his class of 358. He's not afraid of a challenge. Last year during remote learning, he took four AP courses online. AP US History, AP Physics, AP Calculus, and AP English Language and Composition. He is currently taking two languages in an effort to become fluent at a college level in both Spanish and French. As a result, he is a University of Kansas Chancellor's Top Scholar. Diego's work ethic and spirit to excel does not stop in the classroom, but extends in his extracurricular activities. Diego is an LHS varsity tennis athlete. He participated in state competitions in doubles his freshman year and was number one singles in his junior year. He also participates in cross-country and has served as a Catholic Youth Organization basketball team captain. Diego has also accomplished the honor of becoming an Eagle Scout through Boy Scouts of America. Diego's interests are multifaceted as he simultaneously works to become a licensed plumber. He also is very skillful in options trading, cryptocurrency mining, NFT trading. The diversity of talent, interest, and dedication to learning and leading is admirable, and there's no question around why Diego was able to perform in the manner that would lead us to this recognition as a College Board National Hispanic Program Scholar. Please help me celebrate Diego Klisch.
Would you like to say anything, Diego?
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. I'm not done yet. We have one more honor. All right. It is also my esteemed honor to present the College Board National African American Program Scholar from Lawrence High School, Sophia Thomas. She has received this honor based on her outstanding academic achievements and exceptional performance on the PSAT and AP courses. Sophia is an avid reader of all genres. In fact, she describes reading as her passion and accredits most of her knowledge to the many books that she's read. Sophia's commitment to excellence is exhibited in how she has held a 4.0 GPA throughout her years in high school. She received the CI3T Award of Excellence due to having five consecutive semesters of a 4.0. She has taken multiple AP courses in Spanish for four years. She has been named as the University of Kansas Chancellor's Top Scholars for two consecutive years and is a member of National Honor Society. She is ranked number nine in her class. Ms. Thomas is not only a scholar, but an accomplished musician as well. She's a member of the band where she plays trumpet in the marching band, concert band, and Lawrence Youth Symphony. She's a member of the LHS Acapella Choir and Chorale. She has served as a choir president and received the Choral Directors Award two consecutive years. The arts have extended so many opportunities where Sophia has had roles in several LHS musicals and plays as well as the Lawrence Arts Center's Summer Youth Theater. Sophia is an example of excellence, and that is further displayed through her leadership as a LHS Link Crew member, a leader, and writer for the LHS Writers Club and Graffiti Magazine for two years. She's also a member of the local Lawrence Future Former of America chapter. Sophia has modeled good citizenship both at LHS and in the community. She's volunteered at the public library and at LHS. While achieving the aforementioned honors, she's worked at Arbor Court Retirement Community as a food server and aide to residents. In the process, Sophia has made many personal connections with the residents, and she hopes to make their lives better as she stays for college. A testament of her positivity is that she loves her job, and as she gets to work with people, she gets more experience in healthcare and psychology. Please help me honor Sophia Thomas, LHS's National College Board African American Program Scholar.
I just wanted to say that I'm really surprised that I got this award, but I'm honored, and I couldn't have done it without all my teachers and my peers at Lawrence High.
And we do recognize that there are some others that assisted you both on the journey. We have your parents and it looks like some other family members in the audience. Would the family of our two honorees this evening please stand? Awesome. Thank you all so much for being here and for your support of our scholars this evening. And Sophia, I wonder where you get the musicianship from? Awesome. Thank you all so much. Super proud of you. Okay. Next. Special recognition. Congratulations to our very own Board President Erica Hill for recently being awarded the Don Volker Leadership Award. It's my understanding she was voted on by her leadership class of 2021. The Don Volker Leadership Award was established by the 1983 class of Leadership Lawrence to honor a Lawrence leader in memory of Don Volker. Don Volker was the primary force in establishing the Leadership Lawrence program and served as its chairman until his death in December of 1982 during the program year of the first Leadership Lawrence class. So congratulations to our very own Erica Hill for this amazing achievement. And we do recognize that there are some others that assisted you both on the journey. We have your parents and it looks like some other family members in the audience. Would the family of our two honorees this evening please stand? Awesome. Thank you all so much for being here and for your support of our scholars this evening. And Sophia, I wonder where you get the musicianship from? Awesome. Thank you all so much. Super proud of you. Okay. Next. Special recognition. Congratulations to our very own Board President Erica Hill for recently being awarded the Don Volker Leadership Award. It's my understanding she was voted on by her leadership class of 2021. The Don Volker Leadership Award was established by the 1983 class of Leadership Lawrence to honor a Lawrence leader in memory of Don Volker. Don Volker was the primary force in establishing the Leadership Lawrence program and served as its chairman until his death in December of 1982 during the program year of the first Leadership Lawrence class. So congratulations to our very own Erica Hill for this amazing achievement.
All right. Thank you for that, Dr. Lewis. Next, we will have the report of the Superintendent of Schools.
Okay. Just a few other highlights here. First of all, I want to thank the Lawrence Schools Foundation staff, Board of Trustees, and all of our generous business sponsors of the annual community breakfast that took place on Friday. It was a great morning featuring inspiration from Free State High class of 2006 alumna Spencer Lotte, who's now a Sesame Street puppeteer. I enjoyed recognizing four of our high school seniors honored as student champions for their accomplishments in the arts. Devon Janus, Matt Chapel, those are both scholars from Free State High, and Rachel Schmaus and Ashton Rapp of Lawrence High School. So congratulations to those scholars and thank you to all of our community partners who continue to support our Lawrence Schools Foundation. I also want to thank the Lawrence School Foundation again, as well as the Chamber, Kennedy Early Childhood Staff, and community donors for the ribbon cutting at the William Dan Playtown last week. I know that the community will enjoy this safe and inclusive playground for all of our young children and families over at Kennedy. As you may know, the Douglas County Commission last week extended until December 22nd its mask health order for children ages two to 12, and I want to thank our commissioners for their leadership. The district also shared with its staff and school families on Friday revisions to our COVID-19 prevention measures, including changes in contact tracing to incorporate low and high-risk activities, proper and consistent mask wearing, and three to six feet distancing. In addition, we added a KDHE testing program for students and staff identified during contact tracing as close contacts at high risk of exposure of the virus at school. And they may participate in the COVID testing daily during the 10-day quarantine period and remain in school and continue to participate in school activities. Now, these changes will definitely help us meet our goal of ensuring that all of our students remain in school as safely and consistently as possible. Starting Wednesday, Lawrence Douglas County Public Health and LMH Health will offer online appointments for Pfizer COVID-19 booster doses for those 65 and older, residents of long-term care settings, those 18 and older with underlying medical conditions, or at increased risk because of occupational or institutional settings, which does include schools. It is recommended that individuals receive the booster dose at least six months after they receive their final Pfizer dose. The booster dose helps increase protection for those who are at the highest risk of getting the disease. Boosters are not yet available for those receiving the Moderna or Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccines. A preliminary and unofficial and unaudited head count from September 20th shows that our elementary head count is up 73 students. Middle school is up 81 students, and our high schools are up nine students. Conversely, Lawrence Virtual School enrollment is down about 410 students. Now, although we did see an increase from last year of about 25%, we did not meet our projections of at least a 50% increase. Again, these are preliminary numbers. Many of you have heard of this TikTok challenge. We continue to work with our middle schools and our high school building administrators, our staff, students, families, and our school resource officers to discourage theft and vandalism of our school property as part of this social media challenge. Everyone in our school community has worked hard to get our students back in school safely this year. Many thanks to our community for proving the bond several years ago to upgrade our facilities to the beautiful facilities that they are. And it is truly unfortunate that a few of our students chose to behave this way at school. Now, I know that our school families and our students are aware of our expectations and the consequences for participating in this kind of behavior. And I will be honest with you, when I first heard of this challenge nationally, I said to myself, "Our scholars wouldn't do this here in Lawrence." And so to all of our scholars, I will say, "We are better than this." And lastly, as Dr. Johnson comes up to tell you more about our amazing facilities, I want to invite everyone to Lawrence High School's ribbon cutting and Alumni Hall of Honor Celebration at 9:00 AM Saturday, October 9. We hope that you will stop by and see this amazing transformation of this 67-year-old building thanks to our community's continued investment. She'll tell you more about the school tours as well. Dr. Johnson?
Good evening to the board and to our guests in the audience today. We are very excited to finally get to this point at Lawrence High School. Although every aspect is not completed, we are to the point that we can celebrate everything that is taking place. And we know that what is not completed is due to just some of the crisis that we're having nationwide. We invite you, as Dr. Lewis said, on October 9 at 9:00 AM. We're not just going to cut a ribbon, we're going to have a celebration. So come out if you would like to hear the band, the choir. If you want to hear and see performances from our Nass Powell dancers, if you want to see performances by our Free State and Lawrence High steppers. State and Lawrence High steppers, if you want to see musical performances, please come out and join us. There'll be interviews that will be conducted by Matt Llewellyn, beginning at 8:30 a.m. from 23rd Street Brewery. He will be on the site doing interviews from alumni, and we're just going to have a celebration. As you know, I've been there for the past two years as the interim principal, but I do want to recognize Jessica Bassett and Mark Pruitt, who are here as the principal and associate principal, who will be a part of this celebration as well. We have two tours that are taking place. One will begin at 10 a.m. The second will begin at 11 a.m. We will also have free drawings. Psych Styles, who is the muralist, took the cans that he spray painted the mural with, and he depressurized them, and he took pieces of art from the mural and he covered each can. So there will be about 24 drawings. Somebody said, "Sell them." I said, "We're not selling." We're going to, this is a celebration where you put your name in a hat, and we're going to draw names. And when everything is over, you're going to walk out with a piece of history, one of a kind, that's been signed by Psych Styles. So we're really excited about this celebration and where we are today. Thank you, Dr. Lewis.
All right. Thank you. Really looking forward to that. And if you haven't seen that building, images on social media, you really are in for a treat on October the 9th. We conducted our first Superintendent Student Advisory Council meeting a couple of weeks ago, and as we have done in the past, the past couple of years, we have a student board member here with us tonight, Ben Wilkerson. So would you please help me welcome Ben to the board meeting? And as always, Ben, you have just about every right as a board member, except voting rights. You don't get the voting privileges, but you can ask questions of our presenters. Definitely let your voices be heard in this space. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Lewis. So I'd like to also welcome Ben to the board meeting, so welcome. And I also like to, I know they just left, but I extended my congratulations to the scholars that were recognized this evening, and also the four scholars that were recognized at the Lawrence Schools Foundation Breakfast on Friday. And that concludes my president's report. Let's see, we did not have any public comment for this evening, and so next will be board commentary.
I just have a couple. So just take a minute to congratulate the scholars that we heard from tonight. That was pretty impressive, the things that they've been able to accomplish. Had the opportunity in the last couple of weeks, Kelly Paul and I have been working hard with our district negotiations team and PALS CWA. We're very close to getting a contract with them, so we have another meeting scheduled for tomorrow, and so we're very, very close to getting their very first contract done. And so I'm very excited about the work that we've been able to do, how far we've come with them, and the work that's been progressing on both sides. Had the opportunity to attend the William Dan Kennedy Playground ribbon cutting and also the Lawrence Schools Foundation Breakfast. I think for me, from the breakfast and hearing Spencer talk, the biggest thing that I took away from his remarks was him talking about the fact that he still has a letter that he wrote in kindergarten that's where he said he was going to be the next Jim Henson, and that he talked about the fact that every classroom he walked into, he told every teacher probably multiple times that that's what he was going to go do. And he talked about the fact that at his time in Lawrence Public Schools, no teacher ever told him that that wasn't possible. Nobody ever told him, "Well, you need to probably go find a real career." He said everybody was always supportive of that dream. He said sometimes they came, they kind of slipped on the edge and maybe told him and said something along the lines of, "Well, if that's what you're going to do, you better be really good at it." But everyone was always really supportive that that's what he wanted to do. And I think that that sends a message to us that we do a good job, but we can't ever lose sight of that our job as a board, our job as a district, as educators, is to find the passion within each individual student and make sure that we lay the foundation and the programs and the opportunities to help them succeed post-graduation, whatever that dream is. It's not just about college, it's not just about the military, it's not just about whatever, it's about an individual dream and what tools and what programs and what opportunities we can provide to lay the foundation for them to achieve that dream. And that was a good reminder for me to hear him say that, so that's what I got.
Just wanted to give a brief update. Policy committee met on September 16th. The board noticed that there's an item on the consent agenda tonight for First Read where we are recommending, the policy committee is recommending updating our policy BCBK related to executive session policy, and then also the committee reviewed policy KI and had a discussion about the policy and didn't recommend any changes. So we'll be meeting again here in a couple of weeks and continuing our work of regular policy review and working on the social media policy. I also had the opportunity to attend the William Dan Playtown ribbon cutting at Kennedy Early Childhood Center. I had the pleasure of getting to meet Mr. Dan a number of years ago at one of the recognition ceremonies, and I think sometimes he liked to fly under the radar, but he provided such an immense amount of support for our early childhood program in this district over a lot of years, and so it was really, it was really nice to get to honor his memory with that dedication. The Foundation Breakfast was a lot of fun. Spencer was a great speaker, and I'm so proud to have him as a graduate of our district. Finally, I wanted to share with the board, I sat as part of a panel on Saturday morning for the Lawrence Chapter IK of PEO on being, it was a panel discussion with women in local elected offices. So myself, Lisa Larson from the City Commission, and Shannon Portillo from the Douglas County Commission, shared for about an hour and a half about our experiences of being a woman and being an elected official in our community, and had a really great discussion. And I learned, I learned a lot from my fellow elected officials that were on the panel and appreciated all of them sharing a lot of things that I think we've all experienced as board members over the last 18 months in particular. So that was a very powerful discussion, and I appreciated that opportunity. Thanks.
Anyone else want to share? More board comment? Okay. You do? Okay. Go ahead.
Apologize. I had one more special recognition. We have some special guests in the audience, some extremely talented scholars. I know I see Sam, I'm sorry, I see Sam and Zach, as well as Mr. Salz. They were chosen to complete this project, highlighting our LMH partnership, and so I will be quiet and just show the video, and then I'll ask that they come up after the video.
The LMH Leadership Academy is a program designed by LMH in junction with USD 497 to help foster and grow student interest in the hospital. Erica Hill is a member of the LMH Health Foundation Board, and we sat down to talk to her about her role inside the program.
My new role is Director of Health Equity Inclusion and Diversity, and in that role, we're really looking at ways how we can eliminate disparities and create a sense of belonging at LMH, whether you're a patient there or you work there.
We started this in 2019. The first year, we had three students. We selected three students. In 2020, we selected four students, and this year, we selected nine students, and we're out of a total applicant pool of 25.
To my Douglas, I'm a student of this company. I appreciate this year.
I'm Zoe Simmons. I'm going to be a senior at Lawrence High School this year.
I'm Gabby Carter, and I'm going into my senior year at Free State.
My new call, I'm going to be a senior at Lawrence High School.
I'm a dear Breeze, I'll be a senior at Lawrence High School.
I'm Jesse Stowe, I'll be a senior at Lawrence High School.
My name is Arnie. I'm going to be a senior at Lawrence High School.
I'm Chase, I'll be an incoming senior at Lawrence High.
I'm Ellen, I will be an incoming senior at Free State.
How did you guys hear about the program?
It was recommended to me by the social workers at my school.
One of my mom's friends told me about it, and she was like, "This would be really interesting for you," so I took that opportunity.
I heard it through my basketball coach, Coach Dixon.
We started a strategic plan for health equity a few years back, and a part of that plan was to really engage with upstream solutions to advancing health equity, and so we created the LMH Health Leadership Academy to help with that.
The LMH Academy takes students from both high schools and Lawrence to cast as wide a net as possible for a diverse group of applicants.
What makes this program special and different from other programs is that it's a mentorship. And so we have our students that are paired with LMH Health Senior Executive, and they get to explore what leadership means, and also have an opportunity to look at healthcare-specific career tracks.
We're shadowing, like our main mentors are executives, so we definitely get to see more of the diplomacy and the public relations and the budget that goes into running the hospital.
One thing that I learned was that there's a law more that happens behind the scenes that you don't usually see from just being a patient here.
They go to meetings with our mentors. Sometimes, if they have an opportunity, they're able to shadow some physicians, but that's not what this program is about. It's about leadership and building that skill set.
I learned about taking ownership in leadership and how it's a challenge, especially at the age we're at now. Everyone wants to take ownership over a good idea, but when there are bad ideas, nobody really wants to step up and say, "You know, this is where it went wrong," or "This is my fault." So wanting to take ownership for everything that has your name on it is a really big, big deal, and I learned that.
Anyone can step up and be leader, and you don't have to be appointed.
Do you have to listen to people's opinions and ideas?
Leadership isn't, it's not necessarily being appointed to a position of power, anything like a manager. It's more so having the ability to empower and inspire those who work for you to achieve things that seem impossible.
At the end of the summer, LMH held a graduation for the students. Many people from the LMH Foundation, as well as parents, family members, and members of the community attended. The students delivered a capstone presentation in groups about a healthcare issue they cared about. Their mentors and Dr. Anthony Lewis spoke about how important it is to involve young people with opportunities.
The connection that you are making will continue to propel you into successful development.
Would you recommend this program to other students?
Absolutely. Yeah, I would definitely recommend this. It's a great way to spend your summer, make the most out of it, and get to learn so many new things you wouldn't get to learn otherwise.
Every organization, every business, every company in Lawrence is looking for employees. And I tell these employers, when I'm in meetings or when I'm talking to them, the future of your workforce is currently sitting in our classrooms. And so as a community, what can we do to make sure that we are creating programs like this where students will have an opportunity to come inside of these buildings and these companies to see what it's all about?
It does. It really gives students a look into the life of what it means to be in healthcare leadership.
Thank you for being brave and signing up for the academy. Thanks for making a difference, and please know you have mentors who are like at LMH Health.
Mr. Salz, did you want to take a moment to introduce your team?
I just want to thank Dr. Johnson for bringing the story to us. It was kind of the middle of the summer, we didn't really have a project that we were working on, and it was good to have a reason to make a video. And I also wanted to thank Erica Hill for being so welcoming for us to get in there and interview the students, and for Dr. Johnson for giving us the interview.
You said everything. Yeah, we're just glad we got to kind of showcase our skills, and yeah, just thanks for having us.
And thanks to Dr. Salz and Room 308 in LHS for giving us, obviously, the equipment that we needed to make the video, and yeah, that's it.
And I hear that your, your mom is pretty special too, right?
We can thank her, I guess. She's pretty supportive, she's really involved in LHS. I think that has been an inspiration to us to get us involved in LHS through video. Has been our mode, but yeah, thanks.
Yeah, thanks. Pretty special, I'm sorry, she's pretty special to us, to Bob's Winter. What year did you, you're a Bob's Winter? Last year, that's right. Recent Bob's Winter, so congratulations to you.
Working with them over the summer was so much fun. When they were shooting the video, I just heard a ton of laughter. They were incredibly professional, very organized, they knew exactly what they were wanting to do. They, it was incredibly impressive, the way you managed this project. So thank you so much for showcasing the academy in the way that you did. Again, very, very talented young men here, so thank you so much. Okay, the next order of business is the approval of the consent agenda.
I move the Board of Education adopt the items listed on the consent agenda.
Do you have a second?
Do you have a second?
Kimball?
Yes.
Kadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Next is the Annual Human Resources Report. We have a number of administrators. We have Sam Re, Ron May, Sarah, and Caitlin.
Okay, well, good evening, everybody. I am Ron May, and Director of HR and Safety for the district, and I'm here with three of my colleagues that will be helping out as well. Let them introduce themselves.
Sarah Hamlin, Assistant Director of Human Resources.
I'm Caitlin Schulman, the facilitator of recruitment and retention.
And good evening, I'm Laura Basham, I'm Director of Student Services.
So tonight's presentation will address the Strategic Plan, Section 4 of Effective and Committed Employees. We've identified 4.1 and 4.2 as areas that these were talking about, how are we going to increase the retention of our employees, and how are we going to make sure that we're getting good candidates? I will be briefly highlighting some of the data from, everybody should have a copy of the detailed board report, and I'll just be highlighting a little bit of that data, but definitely feel free to ask any questions that may come up from this as well. And then, once I do that, then Caitlin will come up and talk about the exciting things she's been doing as she started to increase the recruitment and retention for the district. So here we have a quick snapshot of the race and ethnicity data of the students of Lawrence Public Schools and the complete staff. This is all staff classified, certified, administrative. Obviously, what our goal is, through our strategic plan and in general, is that we would like for our percentages of our ethnicities to reflect the percentages of the ethnicities of our students. So you can see that we do have some areas where things are pretty close. When we look in the area of Hispanic, or we look in the area of Asian, then we're a little bit off there, but you can kind of see, and then obviously, white, we are 65, about 66% white with our students, and our staff is about 85%. I'm going to let Sarah step up here and talk for a moment about multiracial, please.
So our HR system does not, or we don't ask a question specific to multirace for our staff members. We just, within the last, I would say, five years, started collecting or reporting multirace or like an additional race in our HR system. So any numbers that we have about multirace are going to be specific to staff members that have been hired within the last five years or so and are still with us. That's why you see that we don't report a number specifically on that column, but we do have a number of staff who have reported a primary and a secondary race. reported a, a primary and a secondary race.
Any questions about this before I move to the next? Okay. So one of our, one of the things that we concern ourselves with is what are our, what are our retention rates as a district? And, you know, before we look at those actual retention rates, we just want to talk about what's going on nationally right now. And these are just two quick pictures here. The, the graphic on the left talks about in the, in the fall of 2019, when educators were polled, how likely they were to leave teaching in the next two years. These were the responses. And if you just kind of focus on the two bottom, somewhat likely and very likely, you can see that that was about a thirty-four percent answer rate. Now, that doesn't mean that that's who left, but that was what the feelings were of those educators. That's how they were thinking. The graphic on the right was taken last year, or beginning of this year, after the pandemic was, you know, we're still not really after pandemic, but having been through a year and a half. And you can see that that number, those numbers have changed greatly, to the point that the, the somewhat likely and very likely now is at fifty-four percent. So we know that we're really, you know, a lot of people are taking, you know, thinking about their careers, they're thinking about what's important to them. And so it's changing the way some folks are thinking. Truly statistically speaking across the nation, the actual retention rate is about eighty-four percent, so about sixteen percent leave. So our stability rates as a district, that's what they look like. And as you would probably expect coming in post from, from the pandemic, our numbers have declined over the last three years as far as stability goes. We are still in that sixteen percent, you know, around there, maybe twenty percent. Classified staff has dipped under eighty percent, and that's the first time, obviously, in a few years. So these are some things that, that we're trying to work on to, to turn around. So specifically, when we talk about retention and the importance of having, retaining a staff, we, we're talking about special education paras because that's been a pretty hot topic, especially, and again, this is nationwide. But in our district, this year we have hired forty-seven paras, paraeducators, and we have forty-five, about forty-five paraeducator openings right now. Now, that does not necessarily mean that those are unfilled. Many of these are prob, are, are filled with temps. So we have people that are covering those positions so that we can, we can make sure we're, we're meeting IEP needs. But we're going to let Laura talk a little bit more about the importance.
All right. So as you know, paraeducators serve a very, a vital role in educating our students, especially our students with disabilities. All of the positions that we do have open, it is, it's important to note that these positions are coming from an IEP need. And so the decisions are happening at an individual student-based level, and that is driving the need of these positions. So when you see these forty-five positions, absolutely, those positions are needed. Those are vital services that we need to make sure that are happening in our buildings. Because we have those forty-five openings, what we're doing right now, we're really getting creative. Our teams, our principals, how we're, how we're providing services is getting creative. We're thinking outside of the box. We're encouraging teams to think about how we're grouping students, how we're providing services, making sure that services that we're providing, they're not the luxury services. They're absolutely based on student need. Working on encouraging student independence, working on increasing staff collaboration, kind of sharing the load so that we can make sure that all students are making progress. In special education, absolutely, it's important that all of our students are making progress toward their IEP goals. That's the focus. That's the intent. That's what it always is. That has not changed. When we're looking at forty-five positions that are open, we do know that services in some situations might not be ideal, as ideal as they should be. So what that means is teams are continuing to collect data based on student progress, based on where and how they're meeting their, their goals. And if there is a situation where a student is not making the progress, that we would anticipate that would happen with, with a staff member, or if a staff member, or there's a staffing situation that is interrupting some of that progress, that conversation, that data will be brought back to the IEP team, and we will be looking at COVID recovery services for students. So if there are situations where staffing is impacting progress, which at this point, we're not aware of specific situations, we do know where there's, staffing is tight, staffing is a concern, but people are shifting and people are really making things work. Is it sustainable? Probably not for long term. But are, are we able to continue where we're headed right now? Yes, with the hope that some of the things that you'll hear about in just a minute, we will be able to recruit and to capture some more staff members in this area. So our teams, our special ed teachers do continue to take that data, do continue to look at the staffing, look at the situations that are in place, and look at if there is a situation where we need to have COVID recovery services based on a staffing issue, then we would absolutely be doing that. And that's going to be an ongoing conversation with teams individually, looking at student data as they're making progress toward goals.
Erica? The presentation is pretty long, and we're going to get pretty far away from this. And I have specific questions related to special education. Do you want me to wait? Or, okay. So I heard a couple of things there that I just want to follow up on as a board member, but also just that confused me. So the, when you say that we are, just to clarify, there's a couple of different pieces. There are forty-five positions that are open. They're tied to IEPs. So there's been a determination by special education staff that there are, there is need for individual services, correct, for forty-five, at least for, correct? So we are backfilling those positions by restructuring services? Is that what I?
In some areas, there is some kind of restructuring of some services, or thinking creatively. Yes?
Are we, are we meeting federal guidelines for special services? And how are we filling families in on these staffing shortages and how it's impacting their children? And then I'm also thinking about safety considerations.
Right. So that, that's a great question. First and foremost, safety is a concern. And if we are looking at areas where safety might be impacted, and, and making sure that we're prioritizing those areas, if we do have a service that is not being provided, then those, that communication, along with taking data, but that communication will be happening with, or has happened with parents. I don't know the exact specifics of each and every situation, but I can tell you that absolutely, data is being collected, and we are making sure that our staff members, our certified staff, are taking that data and making decisions about COVID recovery services that might be needed in the future.
If we, I guess what I'm confused about is we, if we don't have individuals to provide those services, what good is COVID recovery funds?
Well, COVID recovery is something that, I mean, we could look, there are lots of different options of how we provide that COVID recovery service. So I know that this summer, so we had COVID recovery services determinations that were made last spring because of the shutdown and because of various reasons and methods. We were providing through special education services, COVID recovery services throughout the summer. So we might have situations where we're looking at this coming summer that we're providing services to help students reach the goals that we thought they would be reaching. We might be looking at after-school times or Saturdays, just getting creative with the COVID recovery services.
I'm a little concerned about that in that it's, it's, what it requires is that students are spending extra time outside of the normal day to make up for staffing shortages, which I know districts across, it's not just a Lawrence problem. This is a problem across the state, and I'm seeing that data. I'm not, I mean, as a, as a board member in, in a monitoring position, I'm a little concerned that there's additional information we need on, not a little, I'm quite a bit concerned. And I know that there's a parent group around special education that is not a board-appointed group. But I would think that there is cause to have conversation with that particular group, and Kevin, to explore this further and make sure that we are meeting our obligations as a board to monitor progress in these areas, because the solution is, it's concerning to me as a, as a board member.
Yeah, absolutely.
I just also want to make sure we clarify, we're actively pursuing hiring these folks. It's not, we're not doing this instead of hiring people. We're doing, it's a Band-Aid until we get the people there.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. But as the challenge is probably going to be systemic and ongoing, given we're seeing it across the state, I do think that the board needs to know what are those creative solutions and understanding how it's impacting families.
Sure. And Caitlin will go over some of the creative solutions that we're working on getting to. And then also, Kelly, you bring up a very good point about our LCAC or the Lawrence Special Education Advisory Committee. And I am an active member, a district member with that group. And so I can tell you that through all last year, as we've been meeting monthly, and we actually, at our last meeting, this has been a conversation with them about COVID recovery services, about kind of the anticipation and, and what to expect.
I think it's really important that we consider that to be, or at least take under evaluation and consideration as a board, whether or not that needs to be a board-appointed committee. So I appreciate the conversation. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your comments. I'm Kelly. Appreciate that. And thank you, Laura.
Okay. So as a bit of a segue to recruitment and retention, one of the things that we are doing in the, in the classified area, where we kind of had some, some struggles this year. It's been obviously para professionals. We've had some issues with filling some of our, several of our food service positions. And our colleagues or our, that we work with for student, they have some issues with bus drivers and even higher, and hiring attendants. So we started to work together to put, to put together an idea of how we could maybe try to combine some things to help folks out. So you, you should have a copy of, and I apologize, I didn't do a good job of copying. So it's up, it's supposed to be a trifold pamphlet, and you see that I didn't print it correctly. It's upside down. So the information's still the same. Just turn it over, GR. It's all, yeah, there you go. But what this kind of outlines is some ideas that we've come up with, and we've actually played with a little bit with a couple of positions. We've had a couple of people try it. So the first one, specific to paraeducators, is we have a lot of students who have one-to-one paraeducators, and often those students also have a bus that they have to ride, and they have to have an attendant on that bus because they may have special needs, healthcare needs, whatever. Well, so our idea was, what if the person who's working with that student also becomes their attendant? In other words, as the, as a person, if you were to take this process, I would clock in in the morning as a first student employee. I'm going to ride the bus with my student. Whenever I get to school, I clock in as a Lawrence Public Schools employee, and they work their day with that student. And then at the end of the day, clock out, and then they ride with the student home. So what that, what that does is, it, it gives that student some stability with that, with that singular person that knows them pretty well. The other nice thing is first student has a policy that they pay a minimum, a four-hour minimum every day. So even if that bus ride is only forty-five minutes one way, that para that's becoming an attendant is making an extra four hours of work for that time. So that was one of the ways we thought that we could combine that. It also has opened up, we have some attendants that work for first student that are very interested in getting a job that has full benefits. And so it works the other direction for them as well. If they're interested in working with that student, then we would make that opportunity. We did try this a little bit at the end of the school year with a, with a para attendant, and I think it worked pretty well. The other one was actually more, we kind of geared it towards, again, bus drivers. It could be attendance as well. But the idea of a bus driver potentially working some of our middle shifts for food service. We have some nine-thirty to one-thirty, eight-thirty to twelve-thirty shifts that a bus driver could drive their route and enter that building, park out, and then they could work food service for four hours, and then they could be ready right about, at that building to take students home at the end of the day. And we did have, I know, one, a couple of drivers, I believe, that did that. And then we had the shortage, and we had to double up, and they had to get pulled off. But we're hoping to get them reinstated and put back into those positions and maybe open up a little more. So just trying to find those creative ways for folks that want to work maybe during that time when their kids are in school, or, you know, to, to have to prevent them, to, maybe it keeps them from having to go work a little bit more in the evenings or things like that. So those are just some, some things we were trying to come up with. And now I'm going to let Caitlin do the, her fun part.
All right. I apologize. I feel like I'm wearing as high heels as possible, but you might not be able to see me over the screen. So I am Caitlin Schulman, and like Ron said, I am brand new to my position this year, and it's also a brand new position in our district. I was actually a teacher just last year at Quail Run, so I'm coming back, I'm coming to you from an elementary background. But I'm very excited about my new position and all the potential it has, and I'm ready to share some information of what we've been working on. So kind of my first task on the job was to do some background research with a book study. I read the book Teacher Diversity and Student Success: Why Racial Representation Matters in the Classroom. So basically, the book outlines why same-race teachers matter and how influential it can be. It also outlined some history of under-representation just in education in general, and some data studies. But mostly, the focus was on why teacher diversity is so important, and some potential action steps that we could put in place to make an impact in our classrooms. So diversity in our staff really can impact student success. It can allow students of color to see people that look like them as models. It can help build relationships because they are able to connect based on some lived experiences or cultural backgrounds, and that can build some, some unique levels of trust. It also can open the door for different perspectives and different voices to be heard in our classrooms, which can also be beneficial for our white students in terms of their attitude and understanding of race, which I think is very important for our youth. So this book kind of hits home for me. I'm also a staff member of color, so I understand how important and influential it can be to have a teacher representing, you know, your cultural background. My husband is also a teacher and a person of color, and his why for getting into education was actually representation. He wanted to make sure that students of color saw a teacher in the front of the room that looked like them. So this is very important to me, and really kind of laid the groundwork for my work as a recruiter. So I'm going to speak a little bit more about our recruitment side. This summer, we hosted a certified recruitment fair in June, and it was a little smaller than our normal fair because it was our first in-person event post-COVID. But we had the opportunity to let building administrators do some initial interviews. And then in July, we followed up with a classified recruitment fair. So this one, again, was a little smaller than we hoped, but we were able to partner with the Health Department to host a little pop-up COVID clinic, which was great to kind of help do our part for the community. And we ended up hiring a few classified para positions from this fair. So we're super excited about that. On the other side of this, it's kind of my upcoming activities in terms of recruitment at university, the university level. So currently, I have signed up to attend Washburn University and the University of Kansas's upcoming career fairs. And the KU actually is hosting two this year. They're hosting one this fall. That's more of a meet and greet. And then in the spring is the big education interview day. So we're hoping to attend both of those. We're also hoping to kind of strengthen our partnership with Haskell University. So we've, we've already had some on-taking with their student teachers placed in our buildings, but we're hoping to strengthen that and really hone in on getting potential teachers that come from a Native American background. We're also looking, stretching our reach at a state for the University of New Mexico, as you saw earlier in the presentation. for the University of New Mexico. As you saw earlier in the presentation, we noticed that our numbers for our staff members that are coming from Hispanic backgrounds are not exactly matching up with our student demographics. So we are hoping to, to look at that university and maybe make some connections there, as well as Tennessee State. So we've learned that Tennessee State actually graduates the most staff of color in the field of education. So we've never truly partnered with them, but when we heard that they were graduating that many people, we are definitely going to try to start a partnership there. And then post-COVID, most universities are offering virtual career fairs, so that is kind of a brand-new field that we're going to be looking into, but it might help us kind of reach a little bit farther since, you know, we are, we're normally very good at doing our local universities, but maybe we can, can reach farther out with those virtual options. And then in February, we host our big in-district recruitment event. So that is normally our biggest one and, and very popular. Our next upcoming event is actually launching tomorrow, and I'm very excited. We are hosting our first-ever student-teacher meet-and-greet recruitment event. So we already have over 70 student teachers and practicum students placed in our buildings from the elementary to the high school level, and even actually at Kennedy as well. So we are inviting them tomorrow to just network with different district employees, come and ask questions, learn more about our district, and hopefully connect and engage with these teachers who are already in our buildings, and maybe hopefully keep them for the upcoming school year. I also am working, I'm spending some time inside the buildings and visiting with the student teachers whenever I'm doing my building visits, trying to be intentional and checking in on the classrooms that have these student teachers. I also will be taking over student-teacher placements for the spring semester, so hopefully that will give me another opportunity to connect with future educators and also establish more connections with those universities. A next big piece of my recruitment side, I have been kind of working the marketing side. So as we all know, social media kind of runs the world we live in. So I've revamped our social media accounts. We already have a district one, but this is our HR-specific. So it's, if you want to follow us, it's USD497HR. We're trying to use all three platforms to kind of engage future staff members from all walks of life, and also promote and advertise in some new and different ways. So you can see at the bottom, there is one of our ads for para professionals that we have really been trying to, to highlight. And then in the center, what I'm excited about was our culinary teacher at Lawrence High. So we created this ad, and I was able to link the certification requirements onto the post. And we actually ended up hiring somebody who came from a culinary background and was a chef, and was just able to transition to being a teacher by fulfilling those certification requirements. So it's kind of gave us a different opportunity to be a little more creative in posting those jobs, and especially ones that are unique like this, or that are high need, kind of like the para professionals. Another aspect, so we've been revamping our social media presence, our online platforms. In front of you, hopefully you have a copy of our new recruitment booklet, and you can kind of flip through that. We are kind of trying to redesign the physical piece that we are going to be taking with us to recruitment events. So in here, it is hoping, I'm hoping to highlight our district goals, some initiatives, our work with equity and inclusion, highlight some awards, some great things that are happening in our classrooms, and just, just give potential teachers a glimpse of what it might look like and feel like to work at Lawrence Public Schools. All right, before I flip to retention, did anybody have any questions on recruitment? Okay. All right, so I'm going to flip over to the other side of my role, which is retention. So as a brand-new position, I'm kind of still figuring out exactly what the day-to-day of my job looks like, but it is a goal of mine to split it pretty 50/50. So 50% of the time, I'm hoping to work on that recruitment, everything that I spoke about earlier, you know, marketing, career fairs, and then the other 50% of the time, I want to be in buildings with teachers. So my goal is to be working alongside teachers as a support, as a resource, as a model, being extra hands in their classrooms. So I have already built some connections with our LEA, and I'm hoping to also do that with PAL, to try to figure out, are there needs that our teachers and our staffs are having, and then finding ways to support them. So what creative solutions can we do to, to help support those needs? I'm also trying to partner and work with learning coaches and building administrators to address any in-building needs. The great part about having a learning coach in each building is they will have a good taste of what their, what their staff needs, and they also mostly are mentoring newer teachers. So if we would like to keep our new teachers, I really want to be able to build that relationship with them and, and hear what they need and to, to feel supported. On the side, you can also see kind of my, I did a digital version of my sticky note right now, that I am working on trying to visit all of the buildings in our district. I'm still kind of working out the physical drive around Lawrence to make sure I visit all the schools, but also making my time intentional in the buildings. I don't just want to be that one lady from HR that walked in my room and didn't say anything. I want to make sure that I'm building relationships with the teachers and that they, they feel like I'm somebody who they can trust and can hear their needs, and I'm not coming in as an evaluator or anything like that, but rather as an advocate. So with that, some of the creative solutions that we've come up with so far, this is coming from my work in buildings. We noticed that there was a need for some creative solutions for our kindergarten classrooms. They have been seeing some more challenging behaviors than normal, kind of post-COVID situation, not having preschool or access to normal, normal learning. So we actually partnered with our master teachers from Kennedy Early Childhood to host two virtual PD sessions for our kindergarten teachers, and our second session was actually double the first one, so there was a big want and need for that. And we also are going to be partnering with KU to host some more professional development sessions, hopefully in October, to address challenging behaviors at both the elementary all the way up to the secondary level, like Dr. Lewis was speaking about earlier with the TikTok challenge. There are some things that are going on that we're hoping to, to have some other master teachers help us address and, and share with our classroom teachers. And this is going to our strategic plan for effective employees. We really are striving to make sure that our staff members feel supported and valued in their work environments. So our goal here with this is to make sure that we are celebrating staff members from all different positions across all different buildings. So we are lucky in Lawrence Public Schools that we have wonderful recognition programs that are housed in building. We also have some partnerships with the School Foundation for Recognition, Teacher Recognitions, but this one is going to be an HR-sponsored, kind of district-wide Staff Spotlight Week. So every day of the week, and we actually kicked off today, so if you have a chance to check out our social media, you'll get to see our Mega Star Monday post. And each day of the week is going to feature a different group of our LPS team. So for example, Mega Star Monday would feature para professionals, title staff, ISA, any of those supporting teachers. And then over to Thankful Thursday, where we will be highlighting our mental health team members, special educators, but basically giving a platform for all of those teachers to be recognized and all of the staff members to be recognized. Another aspect of social media, so obviously I mentioned that we were using it for recruitment, but I'm also using it for retention. So like I said, we're highlighting our staff members on our social media platforms. I'm also doing posts for giveaways, teacher discounts. KU was hosting a educator, teacher appreciation game last weekend, and they were offering discounted tickets, so I shared a post about that. September is also Self-Care Awareness Month, so I've kind of been sharing some information for teachers to do a little check-in on themselves, make sure that they are taking care of themselves so they can take care of their kids. And I've also been posting fun events that are happening in Lawrence to kind of keep that community aspect. Some celebrations, we actually had 15 staff members that moved to certified teachers this year, so that's a great trend. Some were finishing their degrees. I think there were a few in our limited apprentice license program, so paras that were working hours so they could eventually move to teaching positions. We also have a teacher cadets program at the College and Career Academy. So this one got a little, it got a little disrupted during the COVID times, so we're hoping to kind of engage more students with that program. But they do have a preschool side of that right now that is kind of blossoming and booming, so we're hoping to move that and grow it to our elementaries and high schools with the teacher cadets here soon. And then some next steps, I just started to do some stay interviews. So these are just five-question check-ins with different staff members. It is anonymous, and it's basically just hearing their why for staying in Lawrence Public Schools, hearing their needs, and offer, and, and giving them a space to offer areas of improvement or areas of need. This will kind of give me an idea to see if there are any trends across the district for needs or also across buildings. So if there's something that we need to, you know, to hone in on and offer solutions, we can do that based on some things that are coming up in these stay surveys. I'm also working on building a recruitment team. So like I said, there's a lot of career fairs coming up, and I can't do all of them by myself, so I'm trying to take some time to build a diverse recruitment team, and being really intentional on the personnel, on the physical things that we're bringing, on the presentations, and also on a feedback, feedback process. So we're kind of in the mix of that right now and, and hope to have that kicked off before our big recruitment fairs begin. And then I'm going to turn it over to Sarah to talk about our other points.
So as you all know, we are looking forward to retention payments for our staff. Dr. Lewis has communicated out some information about how that, what that schedule will look like. We are currently applying for, or updating our applications for SRT2 and then applying for SR3 funds in order to pay those out. So we don't have specific, a specific date yet because we don't have approval yet, but we're looking forward to those payments. And then we've heard a few other districts talk about referral programs. So we're asking some questions and kind of looking into if this is something that we can manage here in our district. We're just at the very beginning of this conversation, but our idea right now is that we would potentially be able to pay current staff members a referral payment if they refer somebody who can apply and then work for us for a specific period of time. We would be focused on the hard-to-fill areas like special education paras and some food service staff, since those are the areas in which we have a large need right now. Okay.
And now we're open for questions.
Thank you so much for the information that you provided this evening. Do you have any questions or feedback from the board?
I have a, a comment and a question. First of all, welcome, Mrs. Schulman, and I'm excited to see the enthusiasm that you are going to bring to this position, and, and so I appreciate that information. My question is actually probably for Laura, in regard to the, the para professional vacancies. So I know, I think I know that we have more vacancies this year than is typical. How far off of a typical year are we? Is this, is this so far out of the norm in a typical year compared to, you know, the past several years? Just to, I guess I just, I want to understand a little bit the context around those numbers.
I don't have that data specifically. I don't know that we, we have that. We probably can look at getting that, but I don't.
If that, if that is, if it's able to be collected or easily, easily collected, just, I think it would be helpful to have some context around, around that data. And then I know we, we do hire some para professionals that are not special education, not nearly the same number. Are we having as much trouble recruiting for general ed, para professional support, or?
Yeah, and I don't have that information. You're right that it is a lower amount when we think of title or instructional paras and how they're, they're being used. So I don't have that information. My focus has been special education.
Understandably. Okay, thank you.
I can get that information for you in a, in a Friday update, in terms of how far we are.
Okay.
But in talking to some of our other colleagues around the state as early as last week, there are a couple of school districts I know in Johnson County, one had 140 para openings, and another one had close to 240. So it's, it's an area that all school districts are feeling at this point. So that's why I was really excited about some creative ways that we can try to attract and retain our, our paras.
That is the, the idea around, the ideas around that partnership with first student, that's really great to see, and that's something, as far as I know, we've never done anything quite like that before, so appreciate that. Okay, thank you.
Kelly, you have a question?
Okay. So I, the board received a communication, or at least some of us did, that Aletha has raised its compensation for para educators to $15 an hour. Are you all aware of that? And do you know if they're using SRT funds to achieve that, or have, has that been something you all have investigated?
We, I wasn't aware, we don't think we were aware of Aletha saying that they were paying everybody 15 an hour, so I didn't, I don't know about that, and I, so I wouldn't know.
I was wondering, I, I think it's relevant in terms of some of the, I really, I really appreciate some of the creative things that folks are doing. I'm really excited to have this new position, and I agree with Shannon, your enthusiasm is, it's, I love this stay interview. There's a couple things you said that I thought were really excellent. The compensation is a big deal, and there's only so much creative recruitment you can do, and the compensation is going to be a big thing. So it would be interesting to know if Aletha has made that a priority and how they have swung that. It's hard to imagine in this current budget crisis that we're all experiencing how they made that work. So just thinking if there might be some lessons to be learned there.
And I will, I will say that if they are using SRT funds, they, it's not permissible to use SRT funds in that regard. However, if they are doing it, it's probably for three years, and then they're probably going to backfill it with some funds that they have in reserve, you know, which.
It was interesting to see that it was in, it was tied to salary and not to a stipend or a incentive. So I, I'm just curious to see what, how they got, were able to do that.
Yeah.
That's definitely something we can look into and then provide Dr. Lewis some information for an update.
Thank you. Any other questions or feedback from the board? Again, thanks.
I'm sorry, I would, I would just say that as Laura indicated, we are looking, and this was something prior to COVID, looking at our special education delivery model, just kind of seeing where we can do a better job of providing support to our, our scholars. The ultimate goal is for our scholars to be functioning as independently as, as possible. So really just looking holistically at, at our special education delivery model, which we started to partner with, with KU prior to the pandemic, and we are engaging with them again to definitely look at that in that regard. I do want to say, I, I admire and I appreciate this, this team for carrying our strategic initiatives out. You know, a lot of organizations can say, we're working to recruit and retain staff, but I think you've heard some actionable items that's listed in our strategic plan in terms of recruiting and being intentional and using data. We purposely look for, for example, Tennessee State University, which is a historically black college or university, we purposely look for the number-one HBCU that produces the number-one student, I mean, the most students, I'm sorry, students, teachers of color. And so we can wait until they come to Lawrence, but we, at the end of the day, we have to kind of go outside our, our comfort zone. Same for the University of New Mexico, being intentional about where we go to, to recruit. So thank you all.
Ben, do you have anything to add? Okay, all right. All right, thank you all so much, appreciate it.
Thank you all so much. Appreciate it. All right. Next on the agenda is recess to executive session. May we get a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education recess to executive session to protect the public interest in negotiating a fair and equitable contract to discuss negotiations pursuant to the exception for employer-employee negotiations under coma with Dr. Anthony Lewis, Ron May, Larry Engelbrecht, and Kathy Johnson invited to be present, and for the board to return to open session at 7:40 with no action to follow.
Wait a second.
A second.
Kadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
When they were talking about the re-fully...
Kelly, aren't up on here.
When they were talking about the re-fully...
Yeah, so I had set my timer. Forty-five seconds left. Okay, and then, uh... Okay.
So, we are back from executive session with no action to follow. Have a motion to recess into the next executive session, please.
I move to recess.
Sess into... Let me start over. I move to recess to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed with Dr. Anthony Lewis, Dr. Carissa Miles, and Ron May invited to be present and with the board to return to open session in this room at ten minutes after eight with possible action to follow.
JR, second.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith? Hill?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Cudoo Blackwood?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
Okay, we are back from executive session with no action to follow. Have a motion to recess into the next executive session, please.
I moved to recess to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed with Dr. Anthony Lewis, Dr. Carissa Miles, and Ron May invited to be